We will, we will call this Carmel Clay School Board Regular Session Meeting to Order. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
All board members are present for today's meeting.
Thank you. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. As school has now started during these unprecedented times, I want to start this meeting with some thanks and words of encouragement. First, thank you to our teachers. They provide so much for our students and they give so much of themselves. Second, thank you to our families. I know this has not been easy for anyone, but remember, we are better together, together we achieve, and we are the best at getting better. We all need to do our part, both in and outside school, for a successful school year. We need to wear masks, wash our hands, and social distance. Only together can we minimize the spread of the virus. First on the agenda is public comment. We have two members who have requested to speak. The School Board recognizes the value of public comments on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to speak regarding corporation matters. However, the primary purpose of the meeting is to conduct corporation business and public comment may be limited. Please state your name and address when you start your comments. Public comments shall be permitted only as indicated on the registration form. Comments may not contain any personal complaints against a student, employee, or school official. You have three minutes. The green light will come on when your time begins, the yellow light when you have 30 seconds left, and the red night, and the red light when your time is up. First speaking this evening is Chris Nardi. Please come to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Chris Nardi and I live at 5029 Suri Lane. I graduated from Carmel High School in 2018. My comments are regarding Agenda Item 5.2, which is approval of a mental health services agreement. I'm extremely supportive of this initiative, though I wish it had been implemented several years ago to save several students' lives. That being said, I cannot recommend the approval of the agreement before you tonight. My objections pertain to the number of providers in the staffing model, as well as the contents of the agreement. First, the agreement provides for 13 master's levels therapists and eight bachelor's level specialists, for a total of 22 providers. In per capita terms, this ranges from 1 to 240 at Carmel Elementary to 1 to 142 at West Clay, accounting for providers that will split their time between multiple schools. The National Association of School Psychologists recommends a ratio of one school psychologist for every 500 to 700 students. Under this agreement, eight of Carmel's 15 schools would have less than one provider for every 700 students, and 10 would have less than one provider for every 500 students. Considering that school psychologists must have a master's degree in Indiana, only Forest Dale and Carmel Elementary could possibly meet the NASP's recommendation. Second, the agreement explicitly acknowledges that as a Catholic healthcare service, Ascension must abide by ethical and religious directives. The directives require adherence with Catholic theology. The directives say, for instance, that abortion is never permitted, that health services may not promote or nor condone contraceptive practices, and that they are not permitted to engage in immediate material cooperation in actions that are intrinsically immoral. Given these restrictions, what will happen if a pregnant student wishes to discuss their legal right to terminate their pregnancy? Since LGBT youth are more likely to experience mental health conditions, will they be given care that affirms their sexual orientation or gender identity if they seek a provider's services? Even though I believe mental health support is extremely important and advocated for this measure to come before you tonight, with these objections in mind, I recommend that you do not adopt this contract tonight. Instead, I recommend you direct staff to negotiate a contract with higher staffing levels where all, and where all providers are required to treat their patients according to the best consensus of the medical community and not according to religious directives. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Luke McConnell.
Good evening. My name is Luke McConnell. I live at 5337 Rippling Brookway in Carmel. My oldest son is a sixth grader this year at Carmel Middle School, and in the past week has been, we've been going fully virtual because, nothing against anything that this board has done, but unfortunately, the virus is simply not contained enough, in my opinion, to justify reopening schools. So we've made the option to, exercised the option to keep my son at home, as well as my other two in elementary. Unfortunately, I find the virtual curriculum extremely lacking, and I'm here before the board this evening because I have authored several emails to, without naming names, people in this room, which have gone entirely unresponded to. So I'm here to ask the board to take whatever action is necessary regarding specifically the ed mentum virtual curriculum that is being, I almost said offered, but it's not a choice for virtual students. The ed mentum curriculum is a requirement for all middle school, and I believe high school as well, students who are going fully virtual. Unfortunately, the ed mentum curriculum is, in my opinion, not very good. It's extremely unfocused, from what I have found, particularly in the Fundamentals of Art class, and I also find that the workload is absolutely too much for any sixth grade student, particularly considering that the ed mentum courses come with absolutely no guidance from teachers. The teachers for these ed mentum courses have been assigned randomly, as best I can tell randomly, and there are no Zoom meetings with these teachers. There is no agenda for the courses. There is no layout. There's no support. I actually have an example here, if my phone will cooperate, of the assignment that my son received for his very first day of Fundamentals of Art. The activity reads, "Perform online or offline research to learn more about film elements. Then write a short report on the essentials of filmmaking. Explain how these elements are dependent upon each other." That is the assignment given to my 11-year-old on his second day of school, first day with the ed mentum art course. That is not a good assignment. That does not bear any recognition, any resemblance to what he was doing in fifth grade. I don't know what he is experiencing there, but it's not excellence. I don't know what he's exploring, but it's not much of an opportunity, and I don't know how he's supposed to realize his potential with this ed mentum course. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next on the agenda, we have consent. In consent, we are approving personnel report, claims, payroll, approval of gift applications, including some donations of hand sanitizer and surgical masks, minutes from our executive session on July 22nd, and minutes from our regular session on July 27th. May I have a motion to approve consent? Thank you. Leila, second?
Second.
Thank you, Katie. Do we have any questions about consent? No? All in favor of approving consent, please signify by saying aye and raise your hand. Aye. Any opposed? No. Consent passes five to zero. Dr. Bearsford, do you have anything you'd like to say regarding consent?
Well, we've, in this consent agenda, and also in the previous meeting's consent agenda, we made some pretty important hires, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Osterich and Dr. Harmus to talk about some, some new administration and also some new structure that we're working on. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, President Kirchner, Dr. Bearsford, and members of the board. Very excited to present to you this evening two familiar faces that are taking on new administrator roles here with Carmel Clay Schools. And with that, I'd like to bring up Dr. Harmus, who will tell you a little bit more. Thank you.
Good evening. It is my absolute pleasure to introduce to the board again two individuals that have been working at Carmel Clay Schools and been leaders in Carmel Clay Schools for years and years. The first one is Wes Drew. Wes has been a teacher of social studies and avid at Clay and also at Creekside, and also at the high school level. The last three years, as a matter of fact, right before I left Creekside Middle School, I hired Wes. He was my last hire as the Social Studies Department Chair. I saw the leadership in him at that point, and I knew that if he had the leadership of a department chair, that he would continue to grow and prosper, and that he has done. We were lucky enough, Wes interviewed with us for the Assistant Principal's job in Student Services, and it is my pleasure to announce Wes Drew as our new Assistant Principal of Carmel High School. Wes, would you like to introduce your wife? Thank you, Wes. Also, it's my pleasure to introduce Karen McDaniel. Karen has held the position of Assistant Principal of Carmel High School for the last 14 years. During that time, she has her work with students, parents, staff, and community. She has been recognized as a leader at Carmel High School. She has gained the trust through stakeholders from her dedication to Carmel and the entire Carmel community. When we created the Associate Principal position, there's no doubt Karen was the person to take that job. It is my pleasure to have her as a partner in leading Carmel High School in her new role, Karen McDaniel. Would you like to say something, Karen? We would love for you to come up here and say something, sure, in your new role.
Well, I just want to say thank you to everyone and Dr. Harmus for this opportunity. I look forward to serving the stakeholders at Carmel Clay Schools and Carmel High School in whatever capacity is needed, and really glad to be back in school, most important thing. So, thank you. Oh, yeah, that's my husband, Greg.
Well, thank you both very much for everything that you do every day and for stepping up to these new opportunities. We will pause for like 20 seconds if people don't want to stay for the full meeting before we have a public hearing. So, those of you that have school tomorrow, feel free to step out. At this time, I will suspend a regular school board meeting and open a separate public hearing to allow for public input regarding the proposed issuance of general obligation bonds and/or entering into one or more leases with a building corporation, which would permit the building corporation to issue first mortgage bonds. This is the second of two hearings on this topic. Mr. McMichael, would you like to make any comments before we open the meeting for public comments?
Not at the, yes, I would like to make some comments. I'll start by noting that I have a script here because we are doing multiple projects and there's a lot that needs to be described, and it's very important that it's all part of the record. After that, as you noted, then there would be opportunity for public comment. So, I'll begin. Notice of public hearings have been previously published to permit the board to conduct public hearings in conjunction with its consideration of the issuance of general obligation bonds and/or entering into one or more leases with a building corporation, which would permit the building corporation to issue its first mortgage bonds. The proceeds of such general obligation bonds or first mortgage bonds would be used to pay for the cost of all or any portion of certain renovations and miscellaneous facility improvements at Carmel High School, Carmel Middle School, Forest Dale Elementary School, Town Meadow Elementary School, Carmel Life and Learning Center, the West Side Transportation Garage, and all projects related to any of the foregoing projects as further described. Indiana law requires the board conduct two public hearings prior to considering adoption of a resolution preliminarily determining to issue general obligation bonds or enter into a lease or leases for certain controlled projects. Tonight, the board will conduct the second hearing. The first hearing was held June, I'm sorry, July 24th. The law requires that the following information be made available to the public at each hearing. So, the 2021-2023 Facility Project, for which the board is considering issuing general obligations bonds or entering into one or more leases, consists of all or any portion of certain renovations and miscellaneous facility improvements at Carmel High School, including but not limited to facility improvements consisting of all or any portion of surface parking additions and reconfigurations, replacement of translucent panels in the fieldhouse and main gym, culinary arts classroom remodeling, replacement of parking lot lights with LED fixtures, replacement of chillers and boilers, a storage addition at the loading dock, space remodel for restrooms in the fieldhouse, restoration of the roof in Unit C, Area 7, and planetary improvements. Also, certain improvements to the football stadium facility, including but not limited to replacement of the running track surface, general facility improvements, including ADA upgrades, renovation of restrooms, press box, locker rooms, field event reconfiguration, new restrooms, concession and locker room building, pavement repair and resurfacing, boiler and water heater replacement, upgrade of stadium lighting to LED fixtures, erection of a maintenance equipment storage building, expansion of band tower storage, improvements to, also improvements to Murray Soccer Stadium Facility, including upgrading lighting to LED fixtures, erection of permanent bleachers at the southern end of the facility, and extension of end zone net for lacrosse. Also, improvements to the Hartman Field Baseball Complex Facility, including the installation of field turf at the varsity field, upgrade stadium lighting to LED fixtures, renovation of varsity field press box and dugouts, regrading of the junior varsity field, the addition of dugouts, installation of permanent bleachers and press box, and reconfiguration of the complex entrance and addition of parking. Also, improvements to the performing arts facility, including band and orchestra space additions and reconfigurations, and renovation of the existing auditorium and renovation of the main office area. Also, expansion of the existing auditorium to provide for the renovation, the construction and equipping of a new 50-meter competition pool and diving well, renovation of the existing auditorium, including replacement of filtration equipment, replacement of heating, cooling, and humidity control equipment, and replacement of translucent panels. Also, facility improvements at Carmel Middle School, including north parking lot reconfiguration and renovation of the running track surface. Facility improvements at Clay Middle School, including renovation of the running track surface. Also, facility improvements at Forest Dale Elementary School, including replacement of the main lobby skylight. Facility improvements at Town Meadow Elementary School, including installation of rubber safety surface playgrounds. Facility improvements at Carmel Life and Learning Center, including replacement of heating, cooling, and ventilation systems. Facility improvements at the West Side Transportation Garage, including replacement of finishes and upgrade, update of Siemens Temperature Control, Trolls Management System, and all projects related to any of the foregoing projects. Now, the maximum principal amount of bonds will be $107 million. Maximum term of the bonds and the lease, for the bonds, 20 years, for the lease term, 30 years. Estimated interest rates on the bonds, 5%. Estimated total interest cost for the bonds, $67,813,625. If the board adopts a resolution making a preliminary determination following this hearing, a notice of that determination will be published, and property owners or registered voters will have 30 days following the publication to file a petition requesting the application of the local public question process for the proposed bonds and/or lease. The school corporation's current debt service levy is $23,733,841, and the current debt service rate is .2944 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. The estimated increase of the bonds issued and the leases entered into by the school corporation to the debt service levy is $21,881,000, and the tax rate is .2590 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. And you can see on the slides up on the screen that for the debt service levy, those are showing the debt service levy and tax rate estimates over the next 10 years. There's two of them, because one is showing inflation on the, on the, an increase on the assessed value, and the other is, is not, and is showing, really, it's a reflection of the current circumstances and not knowing how that might affect our assessed values. The percent of the school corporation's current and projected debt service payments divided by the net assessed value of the taxable property within the school corporation is approximately .37%. The percent of the school corporation's outstanding long-term debt, coupled with the outstanding long-term debt of other taxing units located within the school corporation, divided by the net assessed value, is approximately 13.55%. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Roger. And obviously, this is the second public hearing that we've heard all those improvements. We also had a in-depth presentation on all of those items as well. So, I will now, at this time, offer members of the public an opportunity to make comments on these plans. Thank you. If there are no comments from the public, we will close the public hearing and move back to the regular board meeting, moving into action items. The first of which is a preliminary determination reimbursement resolution on the bonds that we just heard as part of the public hearing. Mr. McMichael, do you have any additional comments?
Just after having provided opportunity for public input, the administration is recommending that the board adopt this resolution and so that we would then move forward.
Thank you, Roger. May I have a motion to approve the adopt, the adoption of the preliminary determination and reimbursement resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Katie. Second? Thank you, Leila. Does the board have any questions or discussion items for Mr. McMichael? Pam, go ahead.
Yes, one, two questions. Is there a way that we can, or will we be able to, at any time, possibly pay down the bonds earlier so that we can lower that interest rate, I mean, that the amount that we have to pay in interest?
Possibly. As we move through this process, the financial aspect of it will become clearer as we begin to develop specifications and certainly when we start requesting bids. We already have the schedule of payoff. We're providing, assuming a very short payoff of, I believe, eight years for the longest, and five years, I believe, for, for the two general obligation bonds. And that, that can vary, and so in this hearing, we, we allowed for much longer than that, just as we, we assumed like a 5% interest rate, and, and, you know, the last bonds we sold was, was less than 2%. So, in a, in a hearing, it's very important that we share with the public what we'd consider like a worst-case scenario, so that, you know, it would certainly be better to, and if we could not go over that either. So, it's, so it's important that we kind of present that worst-case scenario, but our intention would be to have it look much better than that, and certainly with regard to the payoff. And so that, it's not unusual that bonds of this nature would, would have a, at least a 20-year payoff. And so, so we are anticipating paying these off rather, rather quickly. And I might add that we also are not expecting, nor do, would we intend to have a tax rate increase. And so, to taxpayers, that's very important, and I don't mind sharing that publicly, that we, we, I'm careful because I remember a politician got trouble with this, but we will not have a tax increase on these bonds. So, and we can, we can say that with confidence between the estimates that we have and, and the flexibility we have with, with the payment structure.
Okay, and during the time of the bonds, if the interest rate goes lower, we have in the past refinanced the bonds.
Yes, absolutely.
So, we could possibly do that as well, right?
Correct. As you noted, there have been several bond issues in Carmel that have, over the years, that were refinanced to, just like you would at your home mortgage, if, if the interest rates are significantly less and, and the payback, if you will, for going through that process is considered advisable, then, then yes, we would consider refinancing.
Any other questions for Roger? Roger, just a clarification. So, the reason we could say that there's, the taxes are not going up is because debt, other debt is coming off constantly. So, we, and I guess you have a goal to maintain a constant tax rate. Is that an accurate restatement?
Yes, it, we have, we've, for years and years, have, our intent was to manage our tax rate, and I'm talking specifically to our, to our debt service tax rate, so that it would be, so that it would be level. And, and while it could go down, we've, we've tried very hard for it not to go up, and we would continue that, so that because we think facilities, which is where most of the debt service funds are spent, are ultimately a long-term, but they are kind of a consumable asset. We know that at some point they'll need renovated, at some point they may need replaced. So, we can anticipate all that and do anticipate it, and, and include that, those considerations as we, as we plan more future projects and, and also the payoff schedule. So, that's what we've done here, and that's why we, you're correct, we know that we have other bonds that through this process will pay off. And so, there will not, this is, the tax impact of these And so there will not, this is, the tax impact of these bonds is not like on top of the existing tax rate. It's really, to a great extent, it's, it's replacing the existing tax rate.
Thank, thank you. Any other questions? So we will now vote-
Mr. Christian, I might just-
Dr. Biersford, I apologize, go ahead.
Not a question, but I just wanted, you know, Roger and Ron and their team's very humble. But I want to tell you that they've done a masterful job to keep the facilities in Carmel Clay Schools at a very high level, and it's what our community expects. And they're, you know, they're working and maintaining that tax rate and keeping it solid while making sure our schools are in top shape is, has just been, it's amazing. And there's not a lot of corporations that have that kind of expertise, so we're, we're fortunate to have that kind of forward thinking and foresight to do that kind of forward planning. So I just thought I'd like to chip in a little kudos for that. So that's all, sorry to interrupt.
Thank you.
No, thank, thank you very much. We, we on the Board understand that and appreciate it, but it's important for it to be said, you know, out loud here and in many other places. So we also appreciate, I see you've got some of our partners that are going to actually do the work. We appreciate them coming, we appreciate Ron being here. So, thank you. Next, we will vote all in favor of approving the recommendation on the preliminary determination for bonds. Please raise your hand and signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries 5 to 0. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have a recommendation for approval of behavioral and mental health services agreement. Again, Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. The Board's aware that, I believe, two weeks ago, there was a very extensive and thorough presentation of, of the plan related to providing for behavioral services. As the Board is aware, this isn't providing services for all the children. This is an alternative, and that's significant, that this is an alternative for parents if they so choose to. They can, they could have their child seen by one of these therapists rather than coming to school and taking the child out of school, and assuming they can, they're in a position to do that. And, and so it's a choice. And then, and also the cost is not, the total cost is not the school corporation's. All costs that are billable to insurance, for example, that will happen. And so this contract does provide for a cost, because in order to have a program like this, there, there are, there's oversight and so forth, and, and expenses that are not directly billable to, to insurance. And, and there will be some students that will not have access to insurance, and we, we would not intend to limit services to children based on their ability to pay or to have insurance. And so with those comments, it's a rather, you know, long agreement. It's been thoroughly vetted by our legal counsel, as well as Ascension's legal counsel. And some of the concerns expressed this evening were also addressed. And so with that, I would recommend the Board's approval of this agreement.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. May I have a motion to approve the behavioral and mental health services agreement with Ascension St. Visi, St. Vincent's?
So moved.
Thank you, Lynn, a second. Thank you, Leila. Do we have any questions for Mr. McMichael on this recommendation? Pam?
Yes, I had noticed 8.3 before it was pointed out tonight, and I was going to ask a question about that, so, how about that? I want to know whether or not 8.3 is going to affect services that are going to be provided to the students who are requesting help. I know this is a choice, and are we going to be making parents aware before they accept the services of St. Vincent that 8.3 exists?
Well, it's certainly a matter of public record. I haven't had, been involved in conversations specific to your question as to whether we would, we would particularly point that out. I would say that we have had services provided by Ascension St. Vincent for close to 20 years, I believe, or at least 15. And starting with our trainer services for our secondary schools for athletics, in 2012 or 13, we entered into a, an agreement to, for them to provide our services at our wellness center. And, and then sometime during this, about that same period, we also contracted for our nursing services. And so I point that out, because this, this is an additional agreement with a, a long history of a relationship with, with Ascension St. Vincent. And to the, to my knowledge, we have never had an issue that would in any way be a concern relative to, to the fact that they're a religious-based hospital. And I certainly wouldn't anticipate that we would with this either.
Well, I'm, I'm assuming with some of the other services, there wouldn't be, but specific to mental health and those kinds of services, that would be different, because we could have students who are considering suicide, and the parents would like consultation with somebody and can't afford anything, and so they would prefer to go with this group?
Yes.
And I would want to make sure that they would give that student the best services that they could possibly give them, despite the fact that 8.3 exists.
Yes, and again, I would just say that this has been thoroughly reviewed also by our legal counsel, and so from a, just from a legal perspective, we've been satisfied that, that that section is not a concern. And, and so we certainly don't anticipate that that would be an issue.
If it does become a concern, is it something we can renegotiate?
I don't know if we could renegotiate it. They certainly could, could consider whether we continue with the agreement or not.
Dr. Biersford would just like to make a comment on this question, so.
Yeah, I think you also have to read the rest of the agreement. And 8.7 is a nondiscrimination act, which is that parties agree that neither party in performing its responsibilities and obligations under this agreement will discriminate against any person because of said person's race, color, creed, religion, disability, ethnic or natural origin, gender, sex, sexual orientation, veteran's status, or age. So it's in the agreement that there will be no discrimination based on anything to do with religion, which is spelled out there as well. So while they have guiding principles, just like we do, at the same time, there'll be no discrimination against anyone. And what Mr. McMichael was referring to is the separation, you know, at the end of it, either party can, and can end the relationship, and, and there's a process and timeline for that to occur if needed. You're welcome.
I mean, and, and obviously, as a public school, we believe strongly in separation of church and state. And I think we need to remember that these providers are professionals, and they will, you know, do what's best for the students. And if it's something that they do not feel that they can handle, then there will be a way that they will deal with it, and we will deal with it. Do we have any other questions for Mr. McMichael? Leila?
Well, our staff, our Stephanie Whiteside, for example, will, will no doubt be publicizing this once, once the services begin to be available. So I don't know the specifics of how we will, you know, accomplish that, but.
So are they just all scheduled through the directors? There are two new initiatives here for me.
Right.
So are they all scheduled through them, or are they going through something?
You mean, like a parent or if they were considering using this? They would be able to contact our staff, I'm sure of that. And after the program's up, then they, they may contact one of the Ascension employees, but.
Leila, I can probably give you a little more, having, having worked in this setting a little bit. But really, the referrals can come from anywhere. It can come from a parent coming to like a school counselor and saying, "I think my son or daughter needs some help." It could come from a teacher talking to the school social worker, saying, "This is a student that I think may need some help." It can be a situation where maybe one of our counselors or social workers are providing academic or social-emotional support to a student, and they've, they've got, in their judgment, that this student needs more help at a higher level or more intense therapy. And then they would maybe make that referral. And then that referral would go to the parents, and then the parents would, first off, you know, they'd be notified or informed of what the concerns are. And then at that point in time, they would have an option. And, and that, at that point in time, they would say, "Well, we do have an in-school therapist that you could, you know, have access to." And then at that point in time, it's the parent's choice to whether they want to choose the in-school therapist, or they may want to go back out and, you know, with an outside therapist, and, or they may, you know, choose not to, you know. They, it's still a parental choice and have to have parent consent to do any kind of a therapy experience. I think there's a lot of confusion sometimes, because school counselors and social workers are there for academic and social-emotional support. They do not do therapy. But, but this is, what this is doing is breaking down the barriers of kids getting to therapy and for families, just by having access to that, you know, in the school building. And we've talked about that before, the, the logistics of it and how that can help. So that whole process can come from anywhere. And it could, you know, I, I've been in this for a while, and it really, it could come, sometimes it comes from a neighbor, or it comes from an SRO, or it comes from, you know, an administrator. So really, anybody that has interest in a student can, you know, bring that to the school counselors, the school social workers, or the administration and say, "Hey, this kid needs help."
Thank you. Any other questions from the Board? Katie?
Can you explain a little bit more about the locations and the providers as far as who went to what school? Like some, some of the schools have a master's level and a bachelor's level. Some schools are splitting. How did that come to happen?
I can't tell you the specifics. What I can say is that, since we haven't done this yet, everything that's here is, is estimated. I think they're educated guesses from other people's previous experiences. But in the end, our intent would be to provide services to whatever's necessary in terms of the specifics. In the same way with the staffing. Again, I can't speak to the specifics of why it was assumed, you know, a bachelor's degree in one place and a master's in the other. But I do know that in the end, the overall intent is to address the needs of the kids and provide access to the services.
Thank you.
I could probably add a little bit of detail in that, you know, we're not going to have all those people posted up and in place like in a month. What happens is there may be referrals, and there may be enough referrals for two therapists, you know, and they'll hire two therapists to cover that. And then as the number of, as the need increases, the personnel will be added. Some of the personnel are, it's like straight master's level therapy. Some are, or some of it was in there as coaches, or, and what they do is they work with students on specific behaviors. So there's a lot of different levels of service that occurs within, you know, the plan that's, that's been agreed upon. So, but it's not going to be like, we're going to hire 25 people and then place them and then wait for, you know, enough people to sign up, because it's, you know, they have to have funding for those people. But what'll happen, it will grow over time, and then until it's fully staffed. And it may be where we get fully staffed, and we need more people, so we'll add more people to that plan. So it really does kind of grow itself in a way. And, and so it'll be a process that'll come through, and those, a lot of those positions will be added as needed. Some of them they know, we know we're going to need, so they're going to, we're going to go after those right away. But it's a, it's going to be a process, step-by-step process, growing the number of people that'll be on the staff.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we will now vote all in favor of approving the recommendation for the behavioral and mental health services agreement. Please raise your hand and signify in favor by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, no. Thank you. Motion carries. Next, we will move to the change orders at Clay Center Elementary. Mr. McMichael?
It's essentially, most of it is due to soil stabilization. The details of it you can, you can, are outlined in the, in the report. I believe it was either this school, and the next one is, is very similar. They're both having to do with soils, in some cases permitting. I'll point out that we anticipated this when the bids were awarded, but we hadn't settled on which we thought, and we had an alternate in there, in the bids, but we didn't take the alternate, because we wanted to do some more research. And, and so that's why this is coming after the fact as a change order.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the recommendation, to approve the change orders at Clay Center Elementary? Thank you, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Katie. Do we have any questions for Mr. McMichael or his team? Pam?
Yes, would you explain the soil stabilization process and why we decided, or why it changed so drastically throughout the process? The soils?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it changed. It's just that the, the soil was not stable enough to, to build on, basically.
Okay, and why didn't we know that in the first place?
Well, I think we did know that, as I said, through the bidding process, but we weren't, we saw some different, different solutions, if you will. And so at the time of the, when the bids were awarded for the, for the majority of the work, we chose not to take those alternates until we had, because we wanted more time to investigate the different choices.
Okay, because between the two buildings, that's about $1 million in addition to what we already approved. So I want to make sure that a lot of this doesn't happen, or there aren't any other huge amounts that we're faced with.
Yeah, nobody can guarantee that. I would say from, just from experience, that now that the, these are, as you know, new buildings, and so the likelihood that we're going to find significant unforeseen circumstances, that is highly unlikely. And the other possibility on a change order would be is if we saw something that we just chose to change, either decided we didn't like something or wanted to add something. But it, I really cannot imagine that it would be anything of this magnitude typically in new construction. That's, if you're in major renovations, you can find all kinds of things that you just had no idea was there until you start tearing it.
Right.
But that's, the conditions for a new building are different.
So just, just to follow up, so like you were saying, with new construction, there's not going to really be anything hidden, except for the fact that what we've just done is we didn't know what the soil was, because all we do is borings, random borings, and estimate, and try and figure out what we think it's going to be. And like you said, we had plans for different alternatives, but until they start moving dirt, they don't know the, what they're, what the actual conditions are.
That's certainly a big part of it. The other part is, it can depend on what's going on at the time. So for example, just the timing and the weather, and if it's been a really wet season, and so, well, this is, you know, a significant cost in the context of a $30 million building. Even like weather conditions can contribute to this, but waiting is not a good plan when you have bids awarded, because, you know, contractors won't just stop working while it dries out. And, or they would maybe if you pay them enough money, but you'd soon, you'd soon get into cost one way or the other. So, so it's both of those. And this isn't, in this area, it's not all that uncommon. Unfortunately, we had some, some very similar situations when the Shelburne Road complexes were built Creekside and the elementary schools. I don't remember now whether it was all three of them, but there was, there was some soil issues at that site as well.
Thank you. Other questions from the Board? I also believe that you had shared with us that while this is a new cost, we're not necessarily over budget yet.
No, we're not over budget. We, we anticipated most of this cost, and, and in, in a project like this, we, we, we do provide for contingencies. In this case, we have started with, in addition to allowances that are in each individual contract, we also have about 3%, about, about $2 million of what we call contingency allowance, which would be for something like this, because this was not built into it in the system contract.
Okay, thank you. So now we will vote all in favor of approving the recommendation to accept the change orders for Clay Center Elementary. Please raise your hand and signify in favor by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries. Next, we will move to change orders at the new Carmel Elementary School. Next, we will move to change orders at the new Carmel Elementary School. Mr. McMichael?
As noted, this is, um, similar in that we're, the majority of it has to do with soil stabilization. This, this is the school where we, um, made a conscious decision to not award the alternate until we had done some more investigation. And so this add is five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents.
May I have a motion, uh, to approve the change orders for the new Carmel Elementary School? Thank you, Leila. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Lynn. Do we have any additional questions or questions specific to this school for Mr. McMichael? Katie?
So on some of these, it looks like we're going to be reimbursed. How does that work? The utilities, like for the changes to sanitary main for the $40,545?
Yeah, I'm trying to find it.
Number three.
Um, that's an example where the city, um, utilities department mated that request and, and, um, and the city would plan to reimburse us. Of course, we have contractors on site, so it makes sense that we would take care of getting the work done. But then they will reimburse us.
Will they also, it doesn't explicitly say that on number two for, uh, 'cause they, the curb inlet structures, that was at per city request?
Yeah, and I don't believe they're anticipating reimbursing for that.
Okay.
There, there is, in the, in the city, uh, plan, um, there's a plant on, there's, the, the plan would be to eventually to, to run this street past the school going north and south. And that may never happen, but, but it's in the plan. And so we worked with the city in terms of the orientation of the building and then also, this is a small example, but this curb, um, that's reflecting, um, anticipation of the potential to develop a road and which, in which case they'd need, need the curb. So they're, they're kind of planning ahead, if you will.
So if the, sorry, scrolled. So if the $40,000 will be reimbursed, that would be taken off the 539 total? So it'd be right around 500?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. McMichael? Okay, we will vote again all in favor of approving this recommendation for the changes at the new Carmel Elementary School. Please raise your hand and signify in favor by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? No. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we will move to the adoption of policy 1005. Responsibilities of the superintendent, Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. So this evening I bring to you as a recommendation to adopt policy 1005. The changes, um, in this policy, the members of the school board and policy committee reviewed the, um, responsibilities and made the proposed changes to this policy.
Thank you. Uh, may I have a motion to approve the recommendation to the changes for policy 1005, responsibility of superintendent?
So moved.
Thank you, Lynn. A second?
Second.
Thank you. Katie? All of these policies, this is coming back after a first reading. So do we have any additional questions for Dr. Dudley or the policy committee on this recommendation? Katie?
I just have a comment. I just want to say thank you as always for continuing to reevaluate and look at things. And I know that Dr. Beresford loves to learn more about all the things that we ask him to do in our district. So I just appreciate your hard work on this.
Any other questions? All right, we will vote, you know the drill. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? No. Thank you. Motion carries for the adoption of policy 1005. Next, we have adoption of policy 7450, property inventory. Again, Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. So this policy is brought to the board for a second reading of the policy. The proposed changes were recommended by Mr. McMichael based on the fact that we are required to have a fixed asset program, but the dollar amount is a local decision and that we have not increased that dollar amount, um, in several years. And making it, um, the current accounting requirements, the GAAP accounting, makes this very time-consuming and that fixed access asset inventory really has no value, but it's just a requirement.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the recommendation to the changes to policy 7450, property inventory? Thank you, Pam. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Katie. Again, any questions since the last reading? No? Thank you. All in favor of approving the recommendation to a change, to change this policy? Please raise your hand and signify in favor by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Uh, any against? No. Thank you. Motion carries five to zero. Um, next on the agenda is adoption of policy 8450, control of casual contact communicable diseases. Dr. Dudley?
Thank you. And again, this policy is brought to the board for a second reading. And the proposed changes in this policy were made to the policy committee recommendations from the Indiana School Boards Association. And this policy added the requirement of developing administrative guidelines that outline the procedures and the plans to protect students and staff in the event of a pandemic or an epidemic outbreak, such as we find ourselves in today. And then also the administrative guidelines would address the protocols for wearing personal protective equipment such as masks.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the recommendation for the changes to policy 8450?
So moved.
Uh, thank you, Lynn. A second? Thank you, Katie. I mean, Katie. Thank you, Pam. I'm sorry. Uh, any questions for Dr. Dudley or the policy committee? All right, all in favor of approving the recommendation to make the changes to policy 8450? Please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Uh, any opposed? No. Motion carries five to zero. Uh, the final action item is adoption of changes to policy 2500, teacher appreciation grants. Dr. Dudley?
Thank you. So this policy again is also coming as a second reading to, um, the school board. And the school board must annually adopt a policy on the amount of stipends that will be given to the highly effective and effective teachers. And the proposed changes in this policy update the required dates.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve, um, the changes to policy 2500, teacher appreciation grants?
So moved.
Thank you, Katie. Second? Thank you, Pam. Any questions or discussions? No? All in favor of this? Please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Any opposed? No. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Next, we will move to reports. The first report is a student data report. Uh, Dr. Dudley?
Thank you. So this evening I am going to report on our instructional platforms that we are offering to our students and our families in Carmel Clay Schools. And as you know, we, um, do have some different platforms to best meet the needs of our students and giving our families choices in how they want to make sure that their students are educated, but also then educated in a way that they feel comfortable by keeping them safe. So we do have two different, um, options. In our middle school and our high school, we are, we have an option of an in-person hybrid, which is the students, um, come every other day. So one day they are in person and then the next day they are virtual. And so the, um, classes are split in half. So the number of students in the, in that section are split in half. And on one day they come in person and then the next day they're virtual and they're doing more independent activities following up on the in-person day. So this allows us to, um, make sure that we have safe social distancing in our middle schools and our high schools by keeping our sections a little bit higher if need be. And then also being able to meet the needs in our common areas, such as our cafeterias, our, um, hallways, to provide that social distancing as well. Because basically we're splitting the student body in half and having them come every other day. In our in-person, um, option for our elementary, that is, they come to school in person and, um, they're there every day as we educate the students just similarly like we would do any other year. And then we also offer 100% virtual option for all of our families, um, pre-K through 12th grade. And so this virtual option is where the students are receiving their instruction, um, in a variety of different ways, but it's 100% virtually. So they do not come to school other than maybe to pick up their, um, computer or to pick up different supplies, uh, throughout the time. But they are basically, they are, um, at home or at another facility and then their teacher is working with them virtually. At the elementary school, how this looks is we have teachers that are engaging our students, um, for engaging in, um, instruction and also in academic activities for five hours a day. So when we say that five hours a day, that doesn't mean that they are engaged in a Zoom conference for five hours a day, but that means the student is actively engaged in either a whole class, a small class, um, activity where they're working with the teacher through Zoom. Or it could be where the students are engaged in an activity that they're expected to work on independently as well. And where the five hours came from is our, the state requires that for elementary, our students are engaged in instruction for five hours at the elementary level and for at least six hours at the secondary level. So at the secondary level for our hybrid program, or for, I'm sorry, for our virtual program, we are using a variety of different ways to meet the needs. And as you can imagine, especially at the high school, for the different courses that we offer, it's a very comprehensive high school and we wanted to be able to, um, offer as many courses that we offer in-person, virtually as we possibly could within the means that we have. So we have used a variety of different ways. One is very similar to the elementary where the teachers have a virtual section. So this, instead of the students, um, being in front of them, the teachers, um, have a section of, um, students that are at home and the teacher may Zoom with them for that 90-minute block of time. Um, at the high, middle school, it is very similar to the hybrid where that virtual section is split in half. And on one day, the teacher is Zooming with the students in that section. And then the, um, on the second day, the other, um, day, they're working virtually on independent activities. And so they're splitting the group in half. At the high school, they're in one cohort where they're, the teacher may be interacting with them through Zoom, through other methods, um, through discussion. And then the students also then would work virtually as well on those days. So that's our virtual at the high school and the middle school. We also, as, um, in order to make sure that we could offer as many courses as possible, we also offer some of our courses through edmentum. And at the middle school, the edmentum that we're offering are just the elective courses. And as, um, Mr. McConnell mentioned, our elective courses, we're working through some issues that we're having, especially in our sixth grade, that we're seeing, making sure we have the pacing correct. And then also making sure that we're offering, um, the correct electives. And so we're looking at offering, having students, giving students the option to maybe switch out some of those electives to address some of the issues that, um, we are seeing in that, especially with our sixth grades with edmentum. Edmentum is a program that we have used for years in our high school, in our Carmel Learning Center. Um, and we know it, the, the curriculum is sound. We've not used it as much in our, um, middle school. And so we're, we're working out the bugs in that to make sure that we meet the needs of all of our students. Also at the high school, in order to, um, meet as many courses as we possibly can, we do have some students that are also attending Indiana Online Academy. And Indiana, and that's for a very limited number of students and courses that we could not make it fit for our, um, virtual sections, that we really wanted to make sure we could offer those courses for our students. And as you, um, may recall, we use Indiana Online Academy for our summer school option, um, in the summer. And we do have many students that participate in that, um, that they are taking summer school courses either to, um, get ahead, such as we have many students from eighth to ninth grade to take physical education courses on, at Indiana Online Academy. Or they, we have students that take those, um, courses because they, um, want to improve their grade that they received. So we, we are familiar with Indiana Online Academy, but that is also another piece that we've put into that virtual in order to meet the needs of our students. So as you can see, in our, um, in-person and our hybrid, at the secondary level, um, in the, or the district level, where about 80% of our students are in-person and about 20% of our students are virtual. They've opted to go virtual. But as you can see, across the four secondary schools, there is a, um, variance of the number of students. For example, at the high school, we do have more in-person than our district average at 88%. And then, um, also at Clay Middle School, we have more in-person. And then Carmel Middle is right about, right at the district average. And then you can see Creekside does have a little bit less where they have 75% in-person and then 25% virtually. So we have, um, more of a variance of our in-person versus virtually at our elementary schools. And as you can see across the board, um, we have some that have more in-person than the district average. Some of the outliers though, as you can see, is at, um, College Wood, Orchard Park and West Clay, where we have, at College Wood, for example, we have 61% of our students, um, have the in-person option and 39% of our students are utilizing the virtual option. And then Orchard Park, 65% and then West Clay, 67%. So those schools obviously have the most, um, virtual, um, students, electing those virtual students. So the way we, um, looked at the virtual at the elementary is we looked at the, where I said the teachers are working with, um, the students and engaging them in learning activities for five hours a day. This looks very different than what we did last spring. Last spring, you may recall, we, um, engaged our students and we focused on the essential skills of both reading and math. And so when we went to set up our, um, courses for our virtual courses this year and as our principals got together and they looked at, okay, how do we offer these two, um, platforms? And how can we consolidate some of the in-person before school started? Um, and what might be a good class size average? Well, the, what we were thinking back in, um, the summer was, so in the virtual setting, we, there are some things that you don't have that you have in the in-person setting, such as the transitions, um, taking the class, you know, to the lunchroom, taking the class out for recess, making sure they're all washing their hands. And so at the time, we were thinking, we would have some more, um, we could have those class sizes higher. Then what we found though, we, we did keep those class sizes, um, a bit higher and they were set at about, um, 31, 32, 33 in those virtual sections. But as we had more students enroll and giving them the option of either in-person or virtual, we, um, found that those virtual numbers continued to go up a bit. And also, we also had to balance the in-person, um, numbers to provide that safe social distancing in a classroom. For example, um, at one of our schools where we have kindergarten, we only have two in-person sections of kindergarten. And so as new students came in, we were finding that the only option they did have was the virtual option. But then our kindergarten numbers quickly went up. Our new enrollments in kindergarten went up to 37 in a classroom. So imagine our youngest learners and engaging them in that virtual setting. Another thing we found that, that was very different is in this fall, is we have more of that synchronous learning with the asynchronous learning. Last spring, it was mostly asynchronous where they would do a Zoom meeting that might be synchronous, but it was always optional for the students. Now, in our virtual setting at the elementary, there is required synchronous where that's in real time, where the students are required to log on at a certain time. And they may engage in a class meeting, they may engage in a, um, reading lesson with the teacher or a math lesson with the teacher. And they're expected to be logged on at that time, working with the teacher. That's very different from last year. And what we found was when we, um, started our virtual and having those higher class sizes, it was very difficult for our teachers to manage all of that. So we got lots of feedback from our parents. You received a lot of feedback from our parents of the class sizes at the elementary. We also got a lot of feedback from our teachers and also, um, CTA, our Teachers Association, about the numbers in our, um, virtual sections. And then also we got a lot of feedback from our administrators. So taking that feedback, we looked at, we needed to do something and we need to do something sooner rather than later because our students now, at this point last week, they were already in school for four days. And so they were already with their teachers in that virtual setting, um, making those bonds. And we knew that we needed, if we were going to add additional classes, that we needed to do that. Um, the sooner the better that we did. So we looked at, um, we worked with our, um, elementary principals and we really looked at, how could we add additional sections? Because prior to this, we hired five additional, um, teachers for the virtual, but that's still- Because prior to this, we hired five additional teachers for the virtual, but that still was not enough. So we looked at, how can we add additional sections and to our virtual sections without consolidating any of our in-person? Because we didn't want to solve one problem and create another problem and have more, higher numbers in our in-person. So we did not look at consolidating any of our in-person and moving them to virtual, but we looked at, where do we have staff members that are highly qualified in order to teach that we could move and maybe change into that virtual learning? And so we looked far and wide at looking for those very highly qualified teachers. And fortunately, we are a district that we have a lot of highly qualified teachers and we also hire highly qualified instructional assistants that are certified as teachers. And many times, they might be moving to us later or what have you, but they're all certified and qualified to teach. So we were fortunate enough to reassign some teachers and those teachers might have been a reading intervention teacher that we are reassigned that for this year, they're not going to be used in that capacity, but they'd be used in a, to have a homeroom classroom. Or we looked at, we have two of our district coaches that are our reading specialists in the district. We felt like this year, we're reassigning them to be in those classrooms as well where they're, these people are very qualified educators. So we had several reading teachers, we had some district coaches that we moved into those positions. And then we also had some permanent subs that we've already hired as a permanent sub that are certified teachers, but we're moving them into a regular classroom setting, as well as some other instructional assistants that are certified to teach and we're moving them into that. So we found 12 additional sections. And in that, as I said, we wanted to make sure that we made the change sooner rather than later. And some of you may recall, I know Pam would recall this, that in the years past, we used to add sections, sometimes after school started. It's never an ideal situation at all to do that, but it can be done and they, we really can make sure that that transition is seamless and really looking for the best, that really good transition and making sure we're looking out for the social, emotional aspects as well as meeting their academic needs. And that's, we're doing that now on a larger scale, as you can see. And so as we looked at adding those additional sections, we communicated that out to our parents of, you know, as our administrators, we looked at, okay, how do, can we make these sections and these moves? And we really looked at making those moves based on, first of all, we wanted to make sure that we were not moving special needs students that we've already had a case conference with that teacher and they've already built that relationship. So students that, some of our more intense special needs students were not moved to a different section. We also, when we looked at moving sections, we looked at moving groups of students that were in their homeschool. Because our virtual sections across the district, as we were making the numbers work, they may have students from eight, nine different elementary schools. They may have students from only two elementary schools. And some may have students with only one elementary school, like some of our students that are more of the virtuals, like College Wood, Orchard Park. They may mostly comprise of just one or two elementary schools. But most of them have students from a variety of elementary schools. So when we want to look at moving students, we looked at moving groups of students because knowing that hopefully next year, we will go back to our homeschools and we wanted them to have that base of students. So we didn't try, we tried not to move just one student from a school, but we looked at, how can we move a clump of students? For example, a clump of students from Carmel Elementary to this section so that they also will have some peers when the next year, they're back at their homeschool and they'll see some familiar faces in that moving. So that's, as we looked at the moving piece of that, we did. And so as you'll recall, you are getting some emails, as we are as well, saying, we understand the need to move, but I don't want, I didn't want my child to be moved as well. And we get that and we're responding to those of it. We're looking at each case individually and we're making the very best decision that we can with the information that we have for our students. So as we looked at getting those sections a little bit different, lower, at, for our in-person and our hybrid sections, so the average, and this, again, this is the average, it was very difficult to get that average number at the high school because the way our sections are scheduled, there are so many of those sections that are actually scheduled together that we had to condense. I worked with Mrs. Borto to get that number and it's very difficult to get that average number. So this is, as we looked at all of the sections in that master schedule and tried to condense the ones that were all scheduled together. But we have an average of an in-person hybrid at the high school of 15 students. And the range of that in-person, those sections look anywhere between seven students in a section, up to 30 students in a section. But that range is also taking into account, it's divided by two because remember that classes are divided, half the students come one day, the other half come the other day. So we're looking at about an average of about 15 students on any one day. Now, at the middle school, our in-person hybrid, the average is about 23 students. And that, again, that range goes from 15 to 39 students. And remember, those numbers are divided in half for the in-person. And then our average for the in-person at the elementary across all sixth grade levels and all 11 schools, ranges is about 21 and the range for that is 17 to 25 per class, making sure that we can provide that social distancing in the classes. And as you'll know, as you've been into many of our school classrooms, now, some of our classrooms are a little bit larger at the elementary and some are a little bit smaller. And so making sure that we can provide, like, for example, at Woodbrook, the kindergarten rooms are just lovely and very, very large. And so we can provide more social distancing with 24 students in those classes than maybe at another school where, one of our kindergarten rooms that are a bit smaller. And so those are the ranges for the in-person. And then the virtual averages, again, at the high school, those are, those averages are 17. And then the middle school is 25. And then the elementary is 28 for the averages. And none of those at the top are divided in half at all, but at the bottom, the ranges are divided. Now, I said, for the high school, the virtual students are not divided in half like the hybrid students are. So they're all on, in one cohort. And so one day, they do Zooming and then the next day, they do their independent activities. But at the middle school, though, they do follow the same schedule. The only difference is, instead of in-person, they're Zooming with the teacher on one day and then they're doing the independent activities on the second day. So that virtual number of that 49, that's still divided in two, for two different days. And then our elementary numbers, we were able to get those, the range down from between 24 to 30, which was much better than our 33 to 37 that we had. And in some cases, in some of our math classes, we are pushing 40 students in those math virtual classes. So that is a kind of a makeup of all of our virtual and in-person, our different platforms. So I'll entertain any questions that you might have.
Well, thank you, Dr. Dudley. We know that you and all of our administrators have been putting in long days and we appreciate that. And I know we have questions. Katie, do you want to go first or?
Sure. I'll try to keep these all together. There's some questions about that virtual is full. If teachers, if parents are requesting to move, can you expand on what that, if that's true and what that means?
I'm sorry, the virtual?
Like if they want to switch right now, if they're in-person and they want to go to virtual, but then they're being told it's full.
Okay, yes. So we did have to have a cutoff of moving from in-person to virtual and virtual to in-person. And so last week, we said, we're not moving anybody to a different platform unless there are extenuating circumstances. You know, there may be some extenuating circumstances that come up that we'll have to evaluate. But it's just, I want to move because I just think this will be a better fit or I wanted to try this and it's not really the best fit, so I want to move. We're not having them move because that's not fair for our students who are building that classroom culture. And then also for our teachers, always to have a revolving door between the two. So the number, I think, another piece too is, I believe, some people believe that the virtual sections continued to go up because we were letting everybody just move to that virtual. In reality, there were some changes made based on the needs of students, but the majority of those were new students that enrolled, that they were given the option, just like all of our other students, of in-person or virtual. The, some of our in-person sections are closed in certain schools because we cannot make sure, we cannot maintain social distancing. So those people are in the virtual setting on a waitlist and then if a student moves out of the district and opens up a spot in the in-person, then we would let that virtual person move in if they wanted that in-person. But the virtual sections were not closed, but we were to the point, like in kindergarten, where in some cases, we didn't have room in the in-person and we didn't have room in the virtual. And that was another reason why we had to add additional sections.
Perfect. And that goes to my next question, either for you or Dr. Oresford. I'm pretty sure we did, we had a higher-than-normal late enrollment right before the start of school. Can you confirm if we did and why that was the case, if that's true?
I'm not sure. I think the only one that I'm aware of that later-than-normal was our kindergarten numbers. I think our other enrollment with our rollover, you know, that was very, very much like in past years. But our kindergarten numbers, all spring and summer, were much lower than they typically trend. And I think many of our families were waiting to see what might happen. And I think some families might have been waiting to say, do I want to enroll them this year? Or do I want to wait until next year? But that, I think that was only true with our kindergarten.
And then for the teachers, who aren't new teachers, but who are new to teaching in a classroom this year, what supports are being provided for them as they get started?
Sure. So we divided the classrooms in half last week and let our teachers know, the teachers that are new to teaching virtual, that they would be reassigned to teach the virtual. And then they have until, we're starting the virtual change on this Wednesday. So they had Thursday, Friday last week and then Monday, Tuesday this week. And so they're working with our instructional coaches in the buildings as well as, we try to, where best we could, pair them with another partner that's teaching the same grade level, possibly in the same room. So where we might have two virtual teachers in a classroom that are teaching and then they really can do a lot of team teaching together. But they're very much relying, our instructional coaches have been supporting all of our virtual teachers. And last week and this week, they've been working solely with those new teachers in the buildings to help them to get the curriculum pieces in place, to help them to get their Canvas courses set up and really to, you know, fine tune what, that transition piece.
Thank you. And then how are we planning for changes? Because I know that we initially offered at the quarter for elementary that there could be changes there. How are we preparing now for that? I mean, because we don't know.
That is a great question. And so, you know, we talked different ways of what, you know, we originally, we did say that you can make a change at the quarter. And so we talked this morning about, how do we gather that feedback from our families of what they might want to do? And knowing that if we ask them today, it may be very different in five or six weeks. And the quarter ends right around fall break. And how do we do that without reshuffling all of the classes? And so that is a good question that we are still exploring on what we might, how we might handle that. I don't know, Dr. B, if you want to share any more about that.
Gives me a headache. You know, really, one of the reasons we fought so hard to try to have in-person school and virtual schools, give parents an option. And also, we really wanted the kids to, you know, to get a chance to interact with their teacher and form that relationship because that relationship really wins the day or loses it. And so it's a little contradictory for us to go nine weeks and then change to a different person, you know, in a different location and do all those transitions that go along with that. So it's really been a struggle that our team, we haven't even come to a consensus on our team yet about what's the best approach on that. But we've been kicking around the idea of how could we gather that information at the right time to be able to do that? And then the other question is, is it even feasible? I mean, can we even do it? We've added a lot of staff to be able to do two programs at the same time in every building. And it's way, way more complicated than we even dreamed it would have been. So that's more discussion we'll have and communications will be coming out later, you know, as we get closer to that time, I'm sure.
I have two more questions. I appreciate you guys. The first one, the first one is social distancing. So I know that you look at those numbers for elementary and you're like, 25 kids in a classroom, that's still a lot. But I do know, and I don't know if our families know, teachers removed everything else from their classrooms. All of maybe what would be considered the fun stuff, like the beanbag chairs and little zones and all these different touch areas. So I know that that helped contribute to where the classes are really kind of what used to probably we had in school, where the desks are all in rows. And can you expound or anyone on, a little bit on how we were able to give that distance for these size numbers?
So as you share, correctly share, we did try, we looked at the rooms and we said, what do we, you know, what are the essentials and what can we take out of the room and store somewhere else? So as you know, many of our teachers have a lot of the different alternative seating, give them their choice, and a lot of those pieces were taken out. And it is, it does look much more like classroom with desks spread apart, individual desks, all facing one direction. Some of the pieces that we looked at, like in our kindergarten, where we do have tables and desks, some did switch to desks, but others also have those dividers, those plexiglass dividers so that the students can sit with their peers at a table, but then there's a divider that goes way over their head so that they can have that distance from that and that protection from the students. And then the other piece too is our students are required to wear masks throughout the day. There's times where they can take mask breaks, mask breaks, but we make sure that we have, they do have their masks on. And our students, you know, as we walk through the buildings, our, even our youngest learners are just, it's just second nature, this is just how they do school now. And it is, you know, they're, they're doing a fabulous job of just keeping their masks on. So we're making sure, we're also looked at our cafeterias and how can we spread out more if, you know, in some cases where the stage might be attached to the cafeteria, we have tables on the stage as well so that we could put as few students at a table. We have tables facing all one direction. In some of our buildings, we're very fortunate, we have the tables that are, typically, you put the two tables together and the benches come down. But they also can be just one table and the bench comes down. So they're all facing one direction and they're only sitting on one side of the table. So there's a lot of creative pieces in that. I don't know if Dr. Ostrom wants to add anything as he's walking through the buildings as well, doing those safety checks and?
Absolutely. I recently walked through the middle schools with our middle school principals and we kind of did an audit based upon what we learned at the high school. And a lot of that spacing and the contact tracing that we've had to do, we've learned a lot from it that we were able to pass along. In the high school, 99% of our classrooms, based upon the numbers that you see, we can get six feet of distance in between the students and the teacher. And so we've been very successful with that. At the middle school level, it's a little more difficult to accomplish that, but we are working, as Dr. Dudley said, to spread those desks out and utilize every inch of the room as possible so that in the event that there is a positive case by a student, it minimizes the number of students that may have to quarantine for 14 days due to a direct contact. So we've been working really hard, David Woodward and I, as well as the whole team, to minimize the impact should there be a positive case in our schools.
Thank you. My last question is, I know that you mentioned earlier that there are some students who are having classes with other teachers from other schools that may not be their homeschool and so they may be feeling a little bit in no man's land. Who do they contact for questions or concerns? Do they go to their homeschool principal? Do they go to the teacher's principal? Who would be their best source? Who would be their best source to get that information?
So their best source is to go to their virtual teacher first, and then if they have additional questions, then to go to their homeschool principal, and that's what our families have been doing, is they've been reaching out to, so the virtual section might live at Orchard Park, but the student might be a Smokey Row parent, and so they'll maybe reach out to Mrs. J. But what our elementary principals are doing, they're doing a fabulous job of really working together and sharing that information to really best meet the needs of the students. But their first line would be going to their teacher, their virtual teacher, and then if they still have additional questions, then go to their homeschool principal, and then they'll all work together with the, where the virtual principal lives as well, to make sure that we can do what's best for our students.
All right, and that's all I have. Thank you for...
Thank you. Lynn, do you have any questions? Leila, go ahead.
First, thank you, and I did have a child who has moved to a new classroom in the first grade after four, maybe five days of school, and it was fine. And we love, love, love both of our teachers. So for those who are going to a new classroom, it will be okay, it really will, our kids are very resilient. My second, well, one of my questions about the nine-week option, that scares me to death, and I'm not sure logistically, especially given what we just experienced, how we're going to do that, so good luck. Maybe we don't do that, I don't know, but that's just something to think about. I'm actually more, and this might be for Roger, or Amy, you might know, with all of these changes, in trying to bring in the extra teachers, what is this costing the district?
Well, the overall costs so far directly related to COVID is over $2 million, and the additional instructional staff and so forth that Dr. Dudley referred to, it's about $1 million. And fortunately, we are anticipating, one, that this will be a one-time, or we oftentimes talk about expenses, whether it's a recurring expense and/or one-time, and so our hope is, is that this, you know, we'll be past this by this time next year, as far as, and that this will be a one-time expense. Significant nevertheless. Fortunately, from a financial perspective, we do have cash reserves, and significant reason why you have cash reserves is to protect against things, you know, like this, and you've been here, you know, in the district a long time, and so remember, a whole different circumstances, but when the recession hit 10, 11 years ago, we were told that we were, in this case, losing funding to the tune of about $4 million. And so, so we, shortly after that is actually when we asked for our first referendum. So we are fortunate that we'll be able to cover this cost, not to minimize it in any way, but we'll be able to manage it and maintain, you know, fiscal stability. And from a personal perspective, I'm, in some ways, I'm more concerned about the future because that is unknown, and once we know something like this, then we're in a much better position to, you know, see what we can do about it. So we'll be fine, but it certainly has a financial impact.
Is this a situation, then, that we could use a rainy day fund to...
Yes.
...pay for this, instead of using our cash balance in case there's another incident?
Yeah, it's all the same money. So we have a rainy day fund, but we don't have any money in it, and the way you get money in it is by determining that you have cash reserves in other funds that are, as the statute would say, that they're not encumbered and that they're unneeded for, you know, there's not a specific commit, you know, commitment for those funds. And so that, those are our cash reserves, and in particular, we will, as you know, we have two major funds, the education fund, the operations fund, and so we will first look to the operations fund. And we do anticipate later making a recommendation that we move some funds from our operations fund to our rainy day fund, because this is certainly a rainy day. So that's how we'd anticipate handling that.
Are you done, Leila? Go ahead, Pam.
Yes. So in total, we've had to hire 12 additional teachers and six IAs to support the virtual in-person classes, and so this is, will we get any of this reimbursed from the state with the money that's coming in for COVID, for education?
Well, for Carmel, the money that's identified, called the CARES Act, and we will receive about $235,000, so that's rather insignificant compared to the cost that I just described. And in fact, we intend to use that money for other instructional supports that are somewhat, you know, are related to the circumstance that we're in. So that won't help us in terms of the expenses I'm referring to. There's also, we will also be applying for some FEMA money, and, but unfortunately, it'll be, relative to $2 million, it'll be rather insignificant as well. Will be considered for a 75% reimbursement for such things as hand sanitizer, for example, or other non-instructional expenses, but like overtime, if we have custodians cleaning and working overtime, won't cover their, you know, their regular salary, but anything that we can, you know, identify as excess, it will help with those. And so we appreciate anything we can, that we might receive, but some of the things you see in the media, we're not, and it starts with, you know, the level of poverty, or in our case, the lack of that as compared to, you know, many other communities, and so those districts will receive much more of that support funding than Hamilton County districts.
And my second question is, are we making legislators aware of how much more we have had to spend because of COVID?
Yes, we are. Would be the short answer. Several of us have spoken directly to a number of different legislators on that subject, as well as you no doubt are aware of the so-called 85% funding for virtual students, and of course, that legislation is there, and that is the law, that law that did not anticipate, you know, a pandemic. And as I've noted, our expenses aren't going down because of virtual learning, they're going up, really.
Well, since you brought it up, that 85%, is that 85% of the total year that they go to school virtually, or is it 85% of a day?
Well, it's...
It's kind of confusing, because the law doesn't really state...
I could probably chip in on that one, because we've had several conversations with, you know, people in the General Assembly, and that is, that is defining what virtual is, is a major cornerstone of that question. So really, I think that's going to be, you know, the discussion that's going to occur is, you know, what exactly is 50%? And what, you know, and how does that play out? And now we're fortunate that in our hybrids, we're going every other day, which is 50%. A lot of places are only doing like two days a week or something like that, so that might be more difficult. And a lot of other discussions about is, what is the spirit of that law? You know, it's for people that are doing a virtual program because that's what they do. In this case, a lot of districts like us, we're doing this because we're forced to by a pandemic. And so what criteria they come up with to determine, you know, who is, you know, who falls under the virtual school funding, you know, law, is going to be a real interesting conversation. So there's been several that have started those conversations with legislators, and we're not the only district doing that, it's groups of administration from all districts and every size, shape, and place, and so I think you're going to see a lot more conversations about that. But there is no rulebook on that right now, and there's a lot of questions, and not...
I didn't think so, because when I read the law, it certainly doesn't explain.
A lot of questions, yeah. A lot of questions, not too many answers.
Well, part of the statute also is referring to, as you know, there's a school formula that which is, it's funding for the school year. And so there is, there is no anticipation of some funding for somehow less than a school year. There is a second count, as you know, in February thereabouts, but, so when we talk about 85%, they're really referring to 85% of what we would understand to be the funding per student, which is a annual number.
But how do they come up with that? Is there...
Well, how they come up with it is...
I mean, how do they come up with what constitutes 50% of a student's day for the 85% if that is what we need?
Part of it, yes.
Thank you. Do we have any additional questions? Well, thank you, Dr. Dudley, and thank you, Mr. McMichael. With that, Mr. McMichael, we will move to the next report, which is the financial report. So...
Okay, so this report takes us through July, and you can see, starting with our current budget, our education fund and referendum fund, we're right on track really with where we would project to be. You can see that our ending cash balance for these, combined these two funds, is just over 5.5 million, and, but also notice the asterisk up by July because it's a three-pay month, and so when that happens, it's about another, almost $4 million. And so, which you will see when you compare this year to last year, the cash balance was considerably more by this time, but it's the net, last year, the three-pay was in August, and so you'll see that level out once we get through August. And so, and we're now past the time where, you recall that taxpayers had the choice to delay paying their taxes, and some of them did. Not nearly as high a percentage that some folks across the state were concerned about, at least certainly not in Carmel, that was not a major consideration. But we're past all that now, so we're kind of back on track, if you will, and this July looks similar to most Julies, adjusted for the three-pay month. And as I said, we're, at this point in the year, we're pretty much where we would anticipate being. Then in our operations fund, you have some of that going on as well, because, in terms of salaries, because we certainly have salaries, as you can see here, in our operations fund as well, so that same phenomenon is going on in the operations fund as it did in, does in the education and referendum fund. An added factor for this fund, however, is, this money is also used for other types of operations, repairs to facilities and so forth, and so those kind of non-personnel expenses are not as dependable, you might say, in terms, you know, they're not like salary where they're going to be every two weeks. And so, we certainly are, keep an eye on the operating balance, and it gives us some insight of where we're at and where we're going to be, but it's different than the education fund. And so we have to take into account whether we're spending in non-personnel, whether we're spending early or late, and so the timing of those expenses comes into play. And so, so you can see then the comparison to '19 as compared to this year. And then finally, this is just our bank reconciliation, which we provide you every month, along with beginning and ending balances per fund. And so with that, I would respond to questions if you have.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. Do we have any questions? Katie?
Can you expand a little bit in relation to this, kind of what Leila was saying? Can you tell me again, how much do we receive from the CARES Act? I didn't get a chance to read it.
About $235,000, but that's maintained in a separate fund, so it's not a part of this, these funds or this report.
And then the $2 million that you mentioned earlier, is that all kind, I mean, obviously all intertwined with what's represented here?
It is, and some of that, those expenses at the moment are in, they're in both our education fund, our referendum fund, and significantly in our operations fund. So what I'll be recommending in the future is a consideration for a transfer of funding cash, basically, from our operations fund to the rainy day fund, and then we will go back prior to the, either prior to the end of the year or certainly right after, but haven't determined the timing exactly, but in the end, rather than having a negative impact in our education fund in terms of cash, it'll find its way to the rainy day fund. And we feel, we have sufficient funds, unencumbered, uncommitted funds, in our operations fund to be able to make that transfer without, you can always make the transfer, but you could be reflecting, you know, either deferral of expenses that might otherwise really be needed in the operations fund. So we're going to start with cash that we have that is not committed, so you might say, we can move that, that's not particularly painful to move, because we're not having to make a decision between paying for these expenses at the expense of something else that we otherwise need. And then there would be a point that that could present itself, where it'd be a much harder decision, because now, you know, we don't have enough money to take care of everything, and you start having to trade which expense has the highest priority, and so, but we're not at that point yet.
Thank you for clarifying.
Lynn, go ahead.
I have a question about the salaries and benefits in the July operations fund. On the July is the month we pay in three salaries, three pays, the monthly expense is still significantly lower than other months, and why there is a negative number for benefits? Are we receiving money for this, for this one?
Yeah, I'd have to take a look here.
Under July salaries, 332, it's about half.
Yep.
And last year is more even, but I see the significant drop here in July, and then the benefits showing negative.
Yeah, I'd have to give that some thought, Lynn, before I want to offer a response to that. Trying to, I'm trying to determine right now whether it is in any way related to our current, you know, pandemic situation. I don't think it is.
There is, there is a comment on that cell.
Yeah, I will need to get back with you on that, because I don't know, and I don't want to guess.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions for Mr. McMichael on finances? No? Thank you, Roger. Next, we move to Superintendent Sappart, Dr. Beresford.
Thank you. I'm excited to start out with the world of sports, since we haven't had any in a long, long time, but our girls' golf team continues just to be a force in the state. They're currently still ranked number one in the state, and they've been winning by a significant margin in every meet so far, so kudos to them. Along with that, our men's tennis preseason, number one in the state. Cross country, the greatest sport in the world. The women are, women's cross-country team is ranked number one in the state, and men are ranked number two in the state. Cole Matheson is one of our top distance runners, he's one of the top in the state, and a pretty young guy, too. And, but I want to highlight him because he's set a great example. He won the Valley Kickoffs race, which is on the Laverden Gibson course, which is where the, all the championships are, for the, you know, for Indiana state championships, and then the NCAA's are run there, so it's pretty tight. And then the NCAA's are run there, so it's a pretty tough course. And, uh, that's the first race of the year, and it's also the last one of the year. But, uh, so Cole came in first, won the thing, which is a big, big deal anyhow. And then as soon as he finished, he took his mask and put it up over his nose. And when they were interviewing him, uh, he said, um, "I'm trying to set an example because I want to finish the season, and we need to wear our masks." And, uh, and he just was just a, you know, I just was so impressed by his character in that moment. Instead of talking about, you know, his own individual performance or the team, he was talking about, um, you know, setting a good example and that he really wanted his, uh, to go to school and to finish his season. So I thought that was pretty solid, and the team didn't win. Um, so that was good. Women's soccer's off to great, two-and-oh start, beating Garen last week. Boys soccer, um, is, is rebounding a little bit. They're one, one and one, and soccer, you can have ties. And so, uh, women's volleyball's off to great, two-and-one start. Um, you guys remember Jake Mitchell, our swimmer? And he just graduated last, uh, last year. And, uh, he just made the United States National Team for the second year in a row. So watch out for that kid, he's going to be in the Olympics someday. And then, uh, our football team got to play last week in Plainfield, and, uh, so they're one-and-oh, but, uh, um, our first home game is Friday. And, uh, and everybody's excited about that, but we're only going to have twenty-five percent, uh, in the stands, only twenty-five percent of our capacity will be allowed to, to come in. There'll be social distancing, there'll be masks, there'll be hand washing. It's going to be different, uh, but, um, right, we just can't wait for Friday Night Lights with the Hounds, so, uh, it's going to be nice to have, uh, you know, that going on. There, and it will be, um, you know, on, uh, it'll be streamed so people can watch it, uh, you know, from home as well. So, uh, there we go. Did you want to say something? You have to buy them online, and, uh, kids can buy them, but, but there's no handing of money anymore. It has to be done by credit card or electronically. So, uh, it's just a lot different. Everything about it's going to be different. But yeah, that can be, the, uh, and I don't know if there's still tickets available or not. I think there was some still this morning, I know, I saw on Twitter. And then the next part of my report, I just, uh, I'm labeling "working around the clock." And, uh, if you've noticed, if you look over at that table, you'll see some really tired people. And if you saw the rest of, uh, of my team, uh, they're really tired people. And, uh, there's a lot of people working, and I wanted just to give you a glimpse or a little snapshot of what's been going on. Um, so I'll start in the world of technology. Um, last week, we completed one thousand three hundred and twenty-five tickets. That's when someone contacts technology for help. And then another four hundred and five virtual learning power school tickets. So this is the second week in a row that we've set records on the number of tickets that are submitted and that are solved. And so the technology folks, um, are just, uh, putting an amazing amount of time. And, uh, of course, their theme is with maximum enthusiasm, but, uh, even their enthusiasm, I think, is getting a little tired. Uh, so, uh, and then our curriculum instruction assessment team, and, uh, if you followed along with Amy's, um, report, she kind of explained how it works, but they found a way to lower the class sizes in her virtual, um, program without raising a lot of costs. Um, there's still cost to it, but not as much as, as going out and finding, you know, more teachers, if we could find more teachers at this time of the year. So, uh, it's just amazing, um, effort that they put forth to get that done. And those changes, like she said, was going into effect on Wednesday. And, and we've done this before, like Leila said, but this year, um, you know, the, the challenge of doing two educational programs in every building, um, across the entire district is so complex. And, uh, and they've just done an amazing job, um, making that happen. Um, and I can't, you know, I can't, I wish I could describe how, how hard that is to do, and then the number of hours and hours and hours by so many people to make it happen. Uh, so anyhow, kudos to, to that, that team. And part of that team is also our special services team. And, uh, they've been working hard as well with our exceptional learners, and they collaborate with parents and trying to define and, and pick out the best, uh, you know, educational programming for those students who have disabilities. And, uh, and some of those kids have to be in virtual, and, uh, of course, that's a bigger challenge, and getting those services to virtual, and virtual programming. So they've, uh, really learned a lot from last spring and have really come to the table and done some great things as well, for, with our parents from both virtual and in-person programs. Then you have the staff and student services, you know, you got Dr. O'Stryke and Dave Woodward and that crew, um, along with business and our businesses, and our building administrators. If you saw, you were, um, when we recognized Karen, if you looked at, at her eyes, there were some pretty dark lines under her, and that's for a reason. Um, because most of the work of contact tracing has been going on with, at the high school level, of course. And, um, they've been doing contact tracing in addition to their regular jobs that they, they have, which are pretty taxing jobs anyhow. And, uh, and most of that's in response to the COVID-19 hotline that we have. So parents can, uh, report to us, you know, there's situations where their students are, are, um, have been, um, exposed, you know, maybe to the virus. And through this hotline, uh, that team of administrators contact the high school administrators, and then they actually go for each student and go through their schedules, and they look at how many kids throughout the day, uh, could have been exposed to the virus. It's an incredibly time-consuming, uh, thing. I know that, um, Dr. O'Stryke worked a weekend where he put in twenty-two hours on Saturday and another twenty or so on Sunday. And, uh, and that's going on with, uh, so we're getting a lot of really, um, a lot of, uh, work on just going through all the details. And the reason why that's important is that if they don't do that and spend that time, then the, uh, the percentage chance of a kid who's been exposed or has the virus of coming to school goes up. But if they take and do those, take those hours. And a big kudos to our parents who are calling that hotline and doing the right thing. And, uh, so it's really been a great team effort, but it is hours upon hours and hours. And we're, we're doing some things, which we've, uh, got, um, I think, four people, um, that were hired to start working that hotline so these guys can do their jobs. But, uh, uh, it's, it's tough. And, uh, and, but it's absolutely necessary if we want to, you know, keep our kids as safe as possible. Um, food service, as they've launched two new meal programs to assist students on the hybrid schedule and for our virtual learners. So the virtual meals program has two hundred and eighteen kids participating in it, and they go to curbside, they do a curbside pickup every week. And the meal bag that they get has five school breakfast meals, it has five school lunches and a gallon of milk. And then our hybrid meals program, so this is the kids from the hybrid program, is available to middle schools and Carmel High School. And currently, there's a hundred and twenty-three students who are participating in this. And that's a grab-and-go bag that has two breakfast meals and two lunch meals, uh, to enjoy at home on virtual homes, uh, you know, home days. So when they're at school, they, they can get lunch, and then they can get a grab bag and you, and use that, you know, the, the next day. And that's open not only to our free and reduced lunch kids, but also to any kid who wants them. So a lot of people can take advantage of those. Um, now, if you want to learn more about that, since this is going out to the public, just go onto our, our website and, uh, a lot of information about that. I also want to do just a little shout-out, too, is, uh, our food service works with our school's social workers and counselors, and they also partner with the Carmel Youth Assistance Program. And those folks have been delivering lunches and delivering meal bags to families that can't come in and do the curbside pickup. And so, uh, there's a lot of things going on that's not seen by mu, many, but it's important, and they're, they're getting that job done, and I'm real proud of them. So I want to do a little shout-out for that collaboration. Transportation, our bus team continues to make adjustments to routes and schedules. Uh, they've done a wonderful job responding to this new environment. Um, you got to remember, we asked parents, are you going to ride the bus or not? And then the whole routing was redone based on that. And, uh, and then, of course, there's adjustments that get made because town life changes and, and people get added in and, and that sort of thing. So, uh, they're doing a great job. And just a reminder for all the drivers out there, uh, slow down, uh, the school zone lights are flashing, and it's a very expensive mistake, uh, if you, uh, if you go into our school zones, um, in any kind of speed besides being unsafe. And also remember the law is that you must stop for a school bus when the stop arm is out and the red lights are flashing. And, uh, our buses are equipped with videos, cameras, that if you go past our bus with a stop arm out, uh, your chances of getting caught are pretty high. So, uh, we want to remind everybody of that. Um, our maintenance crew, and, uh, you, uh, got a good glimpse of what's going on in, in that right now with all the construction that's going on. But also, they're taking on all the disinfecting and cleaning. Uh, they're putting in the MERV thirteen filter, that's filters that improve our air quality against COVID-19. They're doing extra cleaning on that, so their air quality's high. Uh, and they're also, um, watching over two elementary schools that are getting built in about, I don't, I forgot the number, probably twenty different, at least twenty different projects that were going on this summer. And, uh, you know, with facelifts and, uh, new entrance to Woodbrook and, uh, Creekside got a freshen up, so did, uh, it's just a lot of projects, going the high school project. Some of those, if you haven't gotten a chance to get out and look at them, they're fantastic and, uh, just beautiful. So they've been, they've been getting those finished. But then I go to the bell ringer. So, and our bell ringers go into our teachers and our principals and our school staff. Um, I think, you know, I don't want anybody to miss this, that, that these guys are pioneers. I started talking to them when I was walking, when I went and visited all the schools. I said, "You guys are really pioneers." And, uh, and then I also had a talk with a Trekkie, who said, "No, this is like Star, Star Trek. They're boldly going where no teacher has gone before." Um, because, you know, from our virtual education pioneers, um, you know, they're doing something that hasn't been done. They're, they're doing, trying to do synchronous learning, synchronous blended with asynchronous learning, um, with groups of students from all over the district and, and, and trying to make that into something special and, and meaningful. And, uh, so, and then you go to our hybrid educators, who are teaching an in-person day while the other half of their class is doing the virtual piece that they've prepared. And then the next day, those guys are coming in, and the other guys are going back. So they're doing two days in a row of simultaneous education going on. Um, and then you look at our in-person elementary staff, so they're doing what they always do, but they're doing, have all these rules. I mean, it's the social distancing, they've got zones and recess, and they've got lunch procedures, and, uh, and they're, they're in a different world. You know, you talk about how we're spreading the seats out and putting it like in the old days. We haven't done that for twenty years, and there's a reason, you know? Yeah, well, yeah, testing's a different gig, but, you know, we, we kind of went away from that, especially with the air, because a long time ago. So this is kind of going back to the future a little bit. But, um, but, you know, it's, it's not, you know, this has been, you know, they're doing the distancing and all that, and then they're also doing the cleaning, and they're doing the hand washing and all that. It's been a massive list, uh, I mean, lift. Uh, this, getting this off the ground is nothing short of a miracle. And, uh, and I couldn't be prouder of their passion, their effort, their dedication. Um, a favorite quote of mine, uh, which is centered around going above and beyond, was, uh, you know, what is it really, that indefinable quality, uh, you know, that, that causes teachers in this case to give that much more just when they just don't have much more to give? And I could describe our team at the table and our team that's not here. Uh, they're going and giving just that much more when they are, they are tired, they do not have much to give, but they just keep giving more. And, um, so our team isn't, you know, complete, though, without also doing a shout-out to our sixteen thousand five hundred pioneers, our students, uh, who are doing school differently this year. And also with the support of their amazing parents. And, uh, and when you put all of that together, wow, you know? And so, uh, I'll close with, uh, something I observed on the first day of school, and that was at kindergarten lunch. And at kindergarten lunch, because we were all worried, how could a kindergarten kid manage a mask and, you know, and, and it's just going to be an impossible task? And I watched the kindergartner sit down at the lunch, he put his tray down, and then he took his mask very carefully, by the strings, like this. He took his lanyard with a little hook on it and hooked it and hung it right there. Then he started eating. Uh, you know, um, I'm sure that he watched the video a lot. Um, I think our parents did a wonderful job preparing our kids, uh, you know, for this kind of new experience that we're going to be in. So, so just wow to all you guys. And, uh, and that's my bell ringer for tonight. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Bearsford, for the report. Thank you for the bell ringer. And again, thank you to all of our teachers, administrators, students, families, parents. It, it takes a community, and we have an awesome community that is stepping up in this unprecedented time. Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Bearsford? Katie?
I have a question, and I think too, um, for Dr. O'Stryke, um, can you explain a little bit more? I know a lot of parents are getting a lot of phone calls, they're having, about meaning, putting quarantine, they've been in close contact. This has been a tremendous effort put on by our Carmel Clay staff. Can you explain, A, why are we the ones that are doing it? You kind of alluded to that a little bit. And B, kind of what's the process that we're going through?
Well, I'll just sh, start off by sharing, we are the ones doing it because by the time we're notified by the health department that one of our students tests positive, it's a day or two days after. As Dr. Bearsford alluded to, if we wait a day or two days, that could knock out, um, a good amount of students that would have to quarantine for fourteen days due to being exposed, and we don't want to do that. We are working around the clock to ensure that those who are going to school in person can continue to go at school in person. And we are making a difference, we're making a huge difference. And so, um, to special shout-out to Karen McDaniel and Maureen Bortow at Carmel High School have been working with me and David Woodward around the clock to ensure that that is happening. Also to address the communication, I think we're going above and beyond with the communication because not only are we communicating with our families that, uh, their child may have to quarantine because they were exposed at the high school, but we're also notifying all of the students that were in that classroom. Even though they were socially distanced away from that person who tested positive, we are sharing with those families that there was a case in the class. Please continue to monitor for signs and symptoms, that's not required. And so I think the transparency in which we're operating, Dr. Bearsford updated the numbers on the website, um, today for the second week. And so I think it's very important, the work that we're doing, the transparency that the district is providing to our community, all comes together with the main goal of keeping kids in school.
Can you just address a little bit about the process of if you, a parent calls into the hotline or you get information from the Department of Health, what are the kind of the steps that you guys go through?
So when a parent calls the hotline, we have a series of questions that we ask them. And I, as Dr. B, uh, indicated, I worked the hotline for many days in a row. And so we are first making sure that everyone's okay in the family, uh, but then we're asking them, "Did you test positive? Uh, were you exposed?" And then we follow a chart provided by the Indiana State Department of Health that gives us different scenarios. Uh, have they been, have they experienced symptoms? Are they asymptomatic, no symptoms? And then based upon that chart, we make a determination if they have to quarantine for fourteen days. Um, if the child tested positive and was in school, do we have to do the contact tracing? If we have to contact trace, then whoever's working the hotline, I would call the high school, uh, with Mrs. McDaniel and Ms. Bortow. And then they would then contact the parent further, ask questions. How did you come to school today? Uh, who did you sit with at lunch? Uh, how did you leave, how did you leave school today? Were you on a bus? Were you in a car? Who were you in the car with? If you were on a bus, we take a snapshot and get video of who they were next to on the bus. In addition, we ask them, um, "Did you participate in any extracurricular activities? If so, who were you within close contact with during that time?" We consult with the coach, we consult with the teachers. Um, and so all of those pieces, we're asking those questions, we're doing the research, we're doing the follow-up, and then we make those determinations based upon the guidance from the State Department of Health. And the other pieces, we have a direct line to the Hamilton County Health Department. So if a situation would get complex, if there's multiple, multiple siblings that may have been in close contact with the other sibling who tested positive, we ask those questions and also receive guidance from the Hamilton County Health Department.
Thank you so very much.
Leila?
As a parent who's received an email about another student in the classroom, I really appreciated that communication. And for us, it really reinforced more conversation on keep your distance. Um, I know the students want to be in class so very badly, and I think they're making an effort, but I do think sending that email to families helps reinforce conversations that we have with our students. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I just say for our personal experience, I know that the kids at the high school, their lunches, they're eating two at a table. When they go to the library, there's even a thing to scan where they sit so that if there were the need for contact tracing, when they're not in their assigned- not in their assigned seat, being K at the end of the alphabet, your assigned seat is different, as opposed to people who are used to that all the time being Z. So it's been a whole new experience, and but like we said, we've got a great community, a great team, and thank you very much. Any other questions for Dr. O'Stryke or Dr. Bearsford? No?
The last piece I'll just add to, going back to one of Katie's questions, is we have seating charts of every single child in every single classroom and every single block that we're able to access at a moment's notice, so we don't lose any time with our contact tracing, so.
I told you, it was complicated, and and, you know, the other part about it that I'm so proud of you guys is that it's very personal, they they speak with every parent, and they speak, and it's not a, it's not a process where it's, you know, they're not paying attention to the people and helping them and answering a lot of questions, and if they can't find the answer, don't know the answer, they'll get it from the the health department. And also, a shout out to Hamilton County Health Department, because they've been very very helpful to us to get us in this situation where we can, we can get so much done so quickly.
Well, thank you. With that, we will move to upcoming events. September seventh is Labor Day, a scheduled no day of school. September fourteenth is our next school board workshop session, September twenty-ninth is school board regular section, October twelfth is school board workshop session, quickly followed by fall break, October fifteenth and sixteenth. And with that, I will accept the motion to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor? Aye, meeting adjourned, thank you.